Lord and pray before we commence this meeting. Father God, once again, we come before your wonderful throne of grace and glory as we do every day, thanking you for all of many mercies, blessings, and comforts of life you've given each and every one of us. You have been so kind and so generous to all of us. Father God, secondly, I always pray for remission of sins. We all make mistakes. And thirdly, Father God, in my prayers, I always pray for others. I pray for the sick, the distressed, the oppressed. There are so many who have so many needs. And Father God, you know them all, and you are the one who does provide for our needs. We just thank you so much for that. Now, Father God, thank you for the opportunity we have today together on behalf of Green County. You do us with the wisdom to make the best decisions on behalf of this county. Father God, I pray that everything we say and do will be pleasing in your sight here in this meeting today. And Father God, I do pray for those who are our protectors, our first responders. There are so many locally, so many at the state, and then at the national level, of course, Father God. We just thank all those who provide services for us. And Father God, lastly, I do thank you for our county employees and the services they provide for the citizens of this county. That is our task, that is our purpose, to provide for our citizens. We do that through our administration. I just thank you so much for those. And Father God, once again, we give you the praise, the honor, the glory for all good things in our lives. Thank you so much. Thank you for the greatest gift of all that you've given us. Father God, these things I humbly pray in your name and in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, you have at your places in your packets right off their proposed agenda for today's meeting. I wish to... Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Everything good?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Have a motion and have a second. Any further discussion? Here now those in favor of the motion signify simple saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried unanimously. We also have a proposed consent agenda for today's meeting. At this time, I wish to remove item one, the minutes from our last meeting. I wish to pull those for some further review. And secondly, I wish to add item five. Item five will be a budget amendment for the landfill for the scales. We need to make those two modifications.
Mr. Chairman, move.
Are there any other modifications?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda with the modifications made.
Have a motion and have a second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here now those in favor of the motion signify simple saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Public comments?
We have... You have one today, sir, Mr. Larry Schultz. He'd like to speak about the American plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I felt a presence to express my thank you to all of you that are in support of our Ray U Bank's memorial plaque that will be... The ceremony will be on the 24th, the day before the Medal of Honor National Award Day. This is very important. It's heartfelt warmth, knowing that good people are everywhere. You just have to be eyes open and see their efforts and what they have accomplished, even though his case was many, many years ago. But it's still the fact that a normal person from a small county in rural North Carolina was able to perform just a majestic effort to save lives and overtake the enemy. So I appreciate all the efforts and everything that's gone into this, and we look forward to the ceremony. And again, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all.
We have no other public comments, so we'll close the public comment section and go to our first presentation, Mr. Mickey Anderson.
If you'll give me just a second, I'll get switched over to his PowerPoint.
Morning, everybody. So I'm Mickey Anderson. I'm the transportation staff for the Eastern Carolina Rural Planning Organization. I know I've worked with Benny a lot and Kyle a lot. They get bombarded with my emails. But for the rest of you, I'm the one who you'll be coming to throughout this process. So the comprehensive transportation plan... Okay. Natasha's going to come around and give out some handouts. It was last updated in Green County in 2012, so we're going to be kicking off that process to get it updated again. And from here, I'm going to hand it over to Scott, Natasha, and Amanda, and they'll go forward with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And your beard will turn gray one day.
Already got one little spot here.
All right, well, hello, everybody. My name's Amanda Killian, and I'm here along with Natasha Henderson and Scott Walson with NCDOT today. And I'll make you just introduce yourself. We also have Glenn White here today, who is the Division Planning Engineer. Today, this is just an informational session. We're just going to talk to you a little bit about what a comprehensive transportation plan is and how we're going to get started on that. So we're excited to be here. So what is a CTP? A CTP is a long-range plan. It's usually 25 to 30 years out. And basically, we're looking at how the future transportation needs are going to change. And so that could be anything from highway to bicycle, pedestrian, or public transportation rail. And the last CTP was done for Green County back in July of 2012, and this is kind of what it looks like. So we're basically just going through, we're going to be updating this and projecting out to the year 2050. So people that work on this, so NCDOT, will also be working with your different municipalities. So the town of Hookerton, town of Snow Hill, and the town of Walsenburg. We'll be working with Green County, the Eastern Carolina Rural Planning Organization, Nikki, all the community stakeholders and the public. So we'll have, you know, surveys and informational sessions to get the public involved as well, to hear their input. So to go through and adopt this plan, it has to be adopted or endorsed at three different levels. So first, that would be locally, and then we'll go to the Eastern Carolina Rural Planning Organization. And then finally, it'll be... It'll go through the NCDOT Board of Transportation. And so the CTP is just kind of, again, the long-range planning. It's the first step. It's, you know, we're not getting into the nitty-gritty. We're more just kind of projecting out what the needs are going to be in the future. And we're trying to put that into a plan. So later on, when you want to get funding, it'll already be written up in the plan, and it'll be a lot easier to do so. And this is a requirement of NC State Statute 13666.2. Like a legal requirement, too. So just how the CTP fits into the whole construction process. So like I mentioned, it's long-range planning. So this is just the first step, just a big overview. Once we finish this plan, we'll get more into the prior certification and funding. Then we'll get into some of the project planning and design, and the projects will be built, and then there'll be maintenance and operation on them. So there's a lot that comes after this. This is just the first step to all of that. And just a reminder, it's a high-level plan. It's not a final design. We're not looking at, you know, design sheets or anything like that. We're really just putting together some maps and showing some areas of concern. And I just want to reinforce that this is a needs-based plan. So, you know, there may be some wants of area, but we're really trying to see, you know, where are people getting injured, where is there a lot of traffic? And we want to focus on those, since we have limited funding. So yeah, like I said, CTPs are need-based plans. We're going to go through, we're going to identify the transportation needs of the area. And so we'll do a lot of analysis and looking at some of the traffic patterns in the area. And yeah, this is not a want-to-plan. It's more of what is needed in the area and how can we help you. So the CTP uses data from a lot of different plans, including the State Transportation Improvement Program, local land development or land use plans, local and statewide transportation plans, and also some of the bike and ped and transit plans. So we kind of take all of this information into account and bring it together in the CTP. So you may be wondering, how long is this process going to take? So it could take anywhere from 12 to 18 months. There's a lot we have to do. We have to work with all the different municipalities and you guys and develop our local vision. And then we need to go through and do an analysis and look at some of the actual traffic patterns and numbers and things. Then we'll put together this draft plan. We'll have public comment, public sessions and places where people can, you know, give their opinion or say maybe firsthand what they've been seeing or problems. And then finally, we'll go through it and we'll adopt that plan. So here's an example. This is a different county. This is Macon County, but this is kind of what the end goal is going to look like. So we have this old plan, which is okay, but our new plans are going to be very user-friendly and just a lot easier to read. There's going to be pictures and graphics inside. So it's just very user-friendly. Anyone can go through and kind of have an understanding of what is in this plan. And so again, here's just some pictures of kind of what the final maps are going to look like. It'll usually have an overview of the entire county, and then we'll have little insets for each of the municipalities. And then there's numbers identifying each of the areas of concern. And then those numbers have a sheet that kind of give a little description of what a fix would be for that area, potential fix. And here's again, just some of the project sheets and the analysis and informational maps. And we're also going to be doing a little bit of environmental investigation and look at some of the flooding areas of concern, so we know that can be a problem around here. And we're hoping to add that and incorporate that into this new CTP, which is not in the last CTP. So here's all our contact information. Again, this is just kind of what we're doing. There's really no action items needed from this. Mickey will be reaching out and coordinating with all of you. But yeah, thank you for having us here today, and feel free to reach out with any questions.
I do have a question. You mentioned something about flooding. If there's nothing in the CTP currently that deals with flooding in the county, and this goes out of 30-year projected, the CTP goes out for 30 years. If we could identify a need for a remedy for a flooding situation in the county, can it be accelerated and brought into the present and 30 years away?
Yeah, that's a great question.
If you follow where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
When you think about Floyd and all the flooding that we've had here in Green County, we've had an awful lot of devastation. And if something could be done short-term to address the flooding, it would be a whole lot better than waiting 30 years out for a CTP, say, okay, now it's time to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know Mickey is...
You follow my thought. You follow my thought. I just want to raise awareness, that's all.
Well, one of the things, even though the plan projects out to the year 2050, there could be recommended improvements prior to that.
Okay.
That's our end year, so yes.
Okay. Just wanted to sort of highlight that. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
David Jones.
Hold on a second. Let's go to closed session, sir. First, we go to closed session for about five minutes.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. And I understand will be brief. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify simple saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We will ask to vacate all those that are not entitled to stay in closed session. Is everyone back? Is this coming back? We are in regular session. At this time, David Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I come to you this morning just to kind of update the solid waste program. I know I did it a while back. I know we've got a new commissioner on board. I don't think he was here when I did it before. So just information purposes more than anything else. On the convenience site line, the attendance contract, as you know, renewed every July, annually, every July. The GFL hauling disposal contract renewed in July of '24. We've only got maybe a year and a half left on that one. Probably need to start negotiating with them for the next contract or reviewing some other options if you would like. I got some tonnage numbers here for you. They're just averages, they're not exact numbers. The current tons from the convenience sites for last year for municipal solid waste, which is just your household garbage in a bag that puts care to the convenience site, is running about 2,500, 2,600 tons a year. Cardboard's about 156 tons a year. The co-mingle recycling is about 92 tons. We haul from the sports complex, the office complex, and the doll parent, we've hauled 60 tons a year away from there. And, you know, GFL's doing all this hauling and disposing of it for us. Current hauling cost is $84, $184.05 per haul. Disposal cost is $51 per ton. The co-mingle disposal cost, because you've got to pay to get rid of the recycling there, you don't... They don't pay you for it. It's $50 a ton. The cardboard, they don't pay us anything for that. But they don't charge us anything for it either, other than the haul fee. Current solid waste fees or household solid waste fees are $84. Our tipping fee is $46 a ton. As you know, we just replaced the scales with a new set. Those scales have been in since '92 or '93. The old ones, they were in bad shape. The links in between the scales, the load cells work off of, were all rusted, all to pieces. When they... We took a chain tool and tried to drag them out of the way, we'd pull them right off. So it was time to replace. About a month and a half ago, I was asked to ask the convenience site operators to start back counting number... Vehicle numbers as they come in. So I got them all. Some of them had them left over from when we were doing it years ago. And but I bought them all these little clickers to count the numbers. About a month and a half, all six sites total, it'd be 9,930 people total out to those six convenience sites in a month and a half. Now, granted, you know, all of them were the same people, you know, coming in two or three times a week. But still, that's, you know, that's the right good amount of people. And the one at Brown Town, just for information purposes, last Friday had 209, and last Saturday had 337. That's one site. That's the one we put the extra compactor at last year. I've had to ask Waste Industries to come and empty both of those compacters every time they go over there on when they have a weekend like this. Now, they don't have a weekend like this every weekend, but, you know, they're... They'll average 200 people a day over there at that one. So that one is very busy. The landfill, we've renewed our site permit, which is called a life of site permit now. The site's protected the last 40 to 50 years currently. With the rate of C and D waste that's going in there, last year, we averaged about 1,500 tons of C and D waste that's actually put in the landfill. We haul 770 tons of MSW away that... What we do is we use open-top containers. We don't take commercial loads of MSW. But we do, you know, stuff that people bring that we can't put in the landfill, we have to put it somewhere. So we put it in these open-top containers, and they haul those to the Santa Ana landfill, just like they do everything else, through the transfer station that GFL owns in Wilson. We accepted 241 tons of yard waste and clearing debris. We grind that, been doing it every year to mix that with the weekly cover dirt that we require to put on the landfill. Equipment needs. My compactor's broke down right now, and I'm using my old backup machine and keep my fingers crossed every time we crank that thing up. I'm having engine problems. That machine's old, it's got a lot of hours on it. I got a guy that can come and work on the engine of it, but only one man in the state can work on the rest of the components to this machine. And he's in states, North Carolina, and getting him to come down here is just like pulling an eye to you. You can't hardly get him. So like I said, the guy, the guy got, local guy, he can work on the engine, and he keeps keeping it running right now. But at some point down the road, you're going to stay in the landfill business, you need to look at replacing that machine. A reconditioned, used machine, reconditioned, gone through shop, and most of all the components put on it is $400,000. A new one is about between $800,000 and a meet. And if rate inflation's going right now and what it costs to have breakdowns on that kind of equipment fixed, we need to really look at increasing our maintenance part of our landfill budget in this coming year, in this coming year. Because, you know, used to, we were talking about it the other day, we used to could get somebody to come from Little Washington, Greg and Poole, work on one of them things for, you know, $1,500, $2,000 one trip. Now it's $3,500 or $4,000 one trip. That's just kind of where we're at. Y'all have any questions, y'all know where I'm at. You got my email, you got my phone number. Call me anytime. Just, like I said, this is just for informational purposes. I kind of like to update y'all on this about once a year, because I know the solid waste program struggles to do what we do, what we have to do with. But, you know, it's going to have to be looked at real close in the coming years.
They the new scales you had put in, do they weigh down to the exact pounds? Do they have 20 pounds?
It's still 20 pounds.
20 pounds.
Yeah. And I will... I want to commend those guys for putting the things in. It took a long time to get them here, because they had to be built and all that. But we had scheduled to be down three days. They had them back up before 5 o'clock that afternoon when we left. So they did three days working, one day.
So David, how many pieces of equipment that you actually have to spend a lot of money on monthly, weekly?
Well, kind of runs in spales. That one machine that's down right now is the main one. It's got where it goes down about, I don't know, every three, four months it'll have a problem. And, you know, luckily so far, it's been engine problems, and this guy got in the county, he can fix it. It just takes time to get it fixed. But anything, just like, well, the other day, I had a hose bust on the duct truck. It would haul covered dirt with it. Well, I had called Greg and Poole to come fix that, because there ain't no way in the world. I mean, there ain't no such thing as a shade tree mechanic anymore. We can't work on this stuff, this new stuff. And you just, I mean, the stuff's in there, packed in there so tight, you can't get to nothing. You got to take off half of something to get to what you want. And I mean, I'm scared to say what that bill is going to be, because it took him two days to replace one hydraulic tire, because he couldn't get to it. Had to take off half of the side of the motor.
Labor's for seeing yet.
The labor, the labor that you... And parts availability, stuff like that. I mean, little stuff, you know, like on a bulldozer, hose blows, you know, there's out, exposed, where we can get right to it, you know, we fix stuff like that. But if it's something major, we don't have the capability to fix it.
I want to thank you for a little update. I know you came towards last year in May and gave similar update.
Yeah, it was.
And you keep saying down the road, you know. I wouldn't know how far down the road. I mean, you need this compactor next year, year before, what? Do you plan on putting it in the budget, right?
I think we put it in our CIT for next year, didn't we?
Next year.
Do you have other recommendations you have for us? Or your needs that you have, that you haven't caught in?
Got a lot of needs. Prioritizing them is the big thing.
The increase of material that's being brought in there from year to year, how much is the increase per year?
to year, how much is the increase per year? I know we've got a lot of stuff.
I would, I would say, I would say in the last year, probably twenty, twenty-five percent in the last year. Cause this, since, since, since COVID hit us, especially the year that COVID's hit us. I mean, we, we did, we did a lot that year, because people weren't working and they were cleaning out everything. I mean, I had, I had them lined up to the road out there a time or two with people waiting to get in, you know, clean that. And it, it gets like that now from time to time. But uh primarily what we, primarily what we get out there is individual residents cleaning up around their house, doing a little small projects. We've got a few large contractors that are coming in there now, because I think folks are, folks are uh, I know there's some housing renovations going on, and there's some housing demolitions going on around the county, and some, some new construction of uh poultry houses and some renovations of some hog farms, things like that. So you know, it picks up when stuff like that's going on. But I would, I would say on the same side, I would say you at least figure on probably ten to fifteen, twenty percent a year going up every year on your tenants. And like I say, it, it fluctuates. No more questions?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Rich Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And yeah, all we're here for is to kind of give you an update on your uh advanced metering infrastructure system, uh just to bring everybody up to speed and uh really just for information and, and questions. Um just as a little bit of background, uh you know, the county uh you know, put in an advanced metering infrastructure system, AMI system, uh that replaced all of your water meters, uh and you know, put transmitters on all of them that allow all meters to be read remotely. Apologize for that. And essentially at your water department office, eliminating the need to have to manually read meters. And the goal in that, per the specifications, were that uh the system must have ninety-nine percent accuracy. And uh your system manufacturer was Mueller, uh certainly a, a well-known uh uh water system manufacturer. Uh to date, that system has not met that ninety-nine percent read rate requirement. And uh in such, we have found that the uh the transmitters that have been attached to the meters have not been uh productive. Uh there have been a lot of failures on those. Uh in the past, they have gone through, you know, a warranty process of, of trying to replace those transmitters with uh, you know, I won't say new ones, replacement ones. But uh what we have found out is that um, you know, transmitters are more of the problem than, than, you know, than anything. And um in an effort to try to improve the accuracy, Mueller has come in, they've added additional antenna to, you know, collect the data. Uh they have been working on warranty-related uh replacement activities on the transmitters. But of the current fifty-four hundred active meters that we've got in the system, we've still got about seven hundred and fifty-five that are not reading electronically. And that means that the county is having to manually read those meters. And um this has been, you know, pointed out to Mueller and recognizing that they have not met the requirements of their contractual agreement with regard to accuracy. And as such, the county has not uh released final payment to them until they could demonstrate compliance with their contract. And in addition to that, uh the failures of the transmitters are warranty-related activities. And so they are required to uh, you know, correct those deficiencies, you know, under no cost to the county. Uh in the process of trying to come up with a solution that met the ninety-nine percent accuracy requirement, uh back in the end of two thousand and twenty-two, uh Mueller approached the county with the solution that they had was to basically put in a brand-new system uh at a discounted cost of a million dollars. And uh the county rejected that, rightfully so, because why do you want to invest in something when uh you have to demonstrate that, you know, what was initially paid for operates in accordance with the contractual requirements? So uh that was ruled out as a possibility. Um through uh further discussion, Mueller recognizes that they have an obligation to meet that ninety-nine percent accuracy requirement. And uh the Mueller staff met with the county uh in February to identify issues and kind of lay out a path to move forward. And uh as a quick summary of that discussion, uh wanted to point out that Mueller, first of all, they accepted the responsibility to meet the contractual obligation. Uh they acknowledged that the uh original meter transmitters were not as effective as were marketed to them. Uh they uh essentially purchased the technology from another provider and uh essentially sold something that was not as effective as they were initially promoted. Uh that goes back to part of the reason why they want to, you know, sell a new system, so to speak. So uh they have offered a plan to bring the county system into contractual requirement through, first of all, upgrading your metering network to the most current network at no additional cost. And uh the reason they're doing that is because they want to uh, instead of trying to replace the warranty transmitters with uh the same transmitter, they want to put in uh new transmitters that uh, you know, they have a history that, that work and are not problematic with regard to failure. But those new transmitters carry with it new technology that must be brought up to uh their current network. Uh so they're offering to install that network at no cost. Uh and, and as such, they're agreeing that they're gonna provide all the hardware, programming, and training to the county at no cost to uh be able to operate that new network. Also, they're willing to provide fifteen hundred new transmitters, which would include the labor to install at no cost. Uh initially, those new transmitters are certainly needed on the seven hundred and fifty-five meters that are not currently reading. But it's also providing, you know, essentially another, you know, several hundred in stock to address other failures that will occur under warranty. And uh they recognize that over time, um just, you know, as the, the functional transmitters wear out, they'll be replaced with new ones and will all just integrate into the new system automatically.
Who's gonna pay for those?
Yeah, it, moving forward, you know, once you get out of your warranty, the county would naturally, the county would pay for the new transmitters.
On the warranty.
The warranty is ten-year full warranty on all transmitters, and then ten-year prorated following the initial, the first ten years.
Okay.
So, you know, there, there's still a possibility.
I think it's important. We said there are fifty-five hundred roughly meters.
Correct.
Minus the fifteen hundred is four thousand. At what cost per meter?
Yeah, the, the transmitters itself are about, you know, eighty-five to a hundred dollars. So.
Forty-five.
Yeah, bulk of the cost of the meter. Um during the discussions we had with them, you know, we pointed out that uh at least on an interim basis upfront, there would be uh two networks that would be operating. You know, one under the old meter transmitters and one under the new. And, and certainly that's, that's how it is. And you are currently paying an annual fee to operate the current network. Uh that includes software support, upgrades, and operational costs. And it was uh very, you know, directly approached to them that, that if we move forward with a new network, the county should not have to pay any of those costs with the old network. And so they have agreed that they will not no longer charge any network fees for your current network. Uh so I thought that was, and that's fair. Um long-term, they are going to provide an agreement with, that stipulates the conditions and the proposal of, of, of the no-cost options and, and what is uh expected to bring the system up in operational. Um actually received that information, I believe, last Thursday and Friday. Have not gone through that. Uh that will ultimately be reviewed and brought before you for uh formal review and approval in terms of moving forward. Uh but I do think that there, that this is a significant concession from Mueller to bring your system up to not only current technology, but bring it whole and, and bring it such that it is going to meet the requirements that were imposed on them with that ninety-nine percent accuracy. So um, you know, your staff fought very hard for y'all to make sure that Mueller understand, understood what their obligations were and what the, what the impact would be if they didn't meet those obligations. And I think they understood. Uh so I wanted to bring that up, you know, so that, you know, y'all were aware of what's going on. And we're gonna certainly come back to you with that, you know, with the formal agreement and proposal from Mueller. Uh but felt like it was appropriate to let you know what was going on.
All right. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
It's been a long process.
Absolutely.
Mueller has worked hard with us in the past.
Yes.
Really have. They have a desire to make it work, but they also have a commitment.
They have a commitment.
By contract. By contract.
Yes.
contractual commitment to, to satisfy.
And as they said, one of the things they want to be able to do is to be able to uh let their other clients know that, hey, you know, this is the problem that we had in Green County. And, you know, we worked out and addressed the problem, and they want Green County to be a, you know, a proponent for what they have done to try to make it whole. And so, again.
Right.
I think that's good.
We were their first AMI.
That is correct.
System.
That's right.
They're, they're a long-term business, been in business for a hundred plus years.
Yes, absolutely.
We were the first AMI system that they put into service.
That's correct.
And they're, and they are trying to make it whole and, and rightly by contract.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I know you won't hear for this conversation, because you never stay for commissioner comments and stuff. But as some of you may recall, Commissioner Blitzer raised the issue of defective meters in the past, which led me to inquire in May of two thousand and twenty-one about the status of the defender's contract. When I inquired about the contract in two thousand and twenty-one, it was my understanding that the county had been aware of the defect for several years, and I believe it was at a time of the six or seven years. At the time, the county attorney assured us the defender had not breached the contract as they were in the process of replacing defective meter. And my question is, why are we still dealing with defective meters when it was brought to attention of the public in May of two thousand and twenty-one? Me, or whether the replacement defective also, or what?
Yes.
So there's two bricks?
Well, yeah, again, you, 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 meter and then transmitter. You know, the meter's operating, the transmitter has been identified deficiency. And uh they were working to replace all of those transmitters under warranty conditions. And as they were replacing them, we were finding out that the transmitters were continuing to fail. And uh after Mueller had still continuing to try to replace the transmitters, came back with, you know, really the long-term solution is to upgrade the transmitters to the, to the, you know, to the new technology. And in order to do that, you know, they had to finish the development of that technology and now come back with really upgrading the transmitter as a whole. So they, at one time, they had gotten the read rate down to two hundred meters, but those transmitters are continuing to fail under warranty. And so this is the, the solution is to no longer keep trying to put in the same transmitters, upgrade those transmitters to the new technology.
So how is this a party defective meters affecting the public? I mean, a lot of people are saying that their, their water bill's up and down a lot. And if people are reading it, is that?
Right. Yeah, and, and the meter will continue to read accuracy. The transmitter is just the communication link between the billing department from the meter. There's not gonna be a, you know, it's not gonna process an incorrect reading from a meter. It will either be a no read or a correct read. And if it goes uh, you know, longer than thirty days, say for a meet, you know, for a read, then you'll have a forty-five day read. So uh you, you, you know, there, there may be the potential where you will have some ebbs and flows, but the, the volume of water is being billed correctly. You know, some days, it's kind of like your electric bill. Some days, some, some months you'll have thirty days of usage on your electric bill. Next day, you might have forty days. So that you'll, you'll have a, you know, you gotta kind of, you know, watch that on your bill to see what the, you know, what the, what the usage and the number of days between readings are. But excellent questions.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Just a few items for action today. Our first being acceptance of a Golden Leaf grantee acknowledgement and agreement. Um Golden Leaf has awarded a fifty thousand dollar due diligence grant for the development of Snowhoe Business and Healthcare Campus. Our economic developer, Mr. Trey Cash, has been uh working diligently on this grant. Initially, we had applied for a CBGI grant, to which Golden Leaf thought that was a bit ambitious of us, and they kind of kicked us back to the due diligence grant. It really just gives us an opportunity to be a part of more grant opportunities with Golden Leaf. But what this uh due diligence grant does is it allows us to go through the environmental reviews and processes to create or to make uh ready this land, this eighteen acres, currently owned by the Committee of One Hundred. Um the environmental assessments, what land stream, uh what land in stream determinations, uh et cetera. Um there's one year to perform these duties um at their expense, um not purchasing, but the environmental, um the environmental assessments and whatnot. So are there questions on this, on this grant?
Who's gonna do the environmental assessments?
Um I think Trey is contracting with companies that are Golden Leaf recommended.
Okay.
I don't know if we've gotten quite that far yet.
We're not getting far. We'll put it out in the ads.
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Chair, I move to approve this uh Golden Leaf acknowledgment and agreement.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No real discussion, but at least it's the first step in the duration that we really like to be going into.
Right.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Um next is a resolution authorizing the execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement. Um if you've been watching the news recently, uh the state of North Carolina has been awarded a second wave, they're calling it, or tranche of funds from different um providers, retailers of opioid drugs. Um in the second tranche, the state was awarded six hundred million dollars. I believe the first tranche or wave was seven hundred and fifty million. So this will increase our allotment of opioid settlement funds. Um it was advised to us from the Association of County Commissioners that we have this resolution approved. We're doing it as timely as, as possible for inclusion of the supplemental funds. Are there questions?
Move to approve, Ms. Chair.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second, second? And a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, you know.
Thank you. Um next, I have a, a final site in design for the water building. It includes a budget. Um the budget is higher than anticipated. Um as mentioned in prior discussion, labor, um some materials are just through the roof. Uh we've been working towards this building for quite a while. Um I do really think that it shows a commitment to uh your commitment to professionalize the department, given the space is needed for some of these technologies that have. department, given the space is needed for some of these technologies that have been part of our agenda prior to this. Are there questions?
No questions.
Oh, pal, when we would this, you know, the building in production and, and a finished product, how to come on you to anticipate that?
So, Mr. Tony Barrow is our contractor for this facility, for this project. And in speaking with him, he said it would be a nine months, so Christmas time, Christmas. Hopefully in calendar year 2023, we would, this building would go online. We'll be making sure that we prepare for this in our annual budget. I know the water department, Public Works Department is excited for this type of facility. We've probably needed it longer than we should have, than we've let it go.
Move to approve the public works maintenance, correct, Mr. Chair.
The motion have a second. I'll just only say, you know, it's, we are like many, many others got caught up in the COVID.
Yes, sir.
The lack of materials, the expense, everything has just escalated. But it's something that we do really need.
These are ARP funds?
Yes, sir. I thank you for bringing that up.
And they are ARP funds.
I recommend the repurposed ARP funds.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Thank you. My last item for your attention is approval for the Justice Center HVAC proposal. Piedmont has presented us with a proposal to replace 12 of our large custom HVAC systems on top of the Justice Center. These, these systems are, they've, they've experienced wear and tear. They run 24/7. They're kind of the brains behind the function that takes place, the cooling and heating of that building. We are already experiencing some issues with them, and these are costly issues. With this proposal, I would recommend, again, using repurposed ARP funds and that you act on this if you agree that we need to. I do think I saw Mr. Rusty veteran here from Piedmont. If any of you had any technical questions, what are your thoughts?
How long, how long have ones existed, once we got, how long have they been since? 2012?
But if you recall, initially, they probably weren't maintained the way they should have been. And I know when we brought Piedmont on, they were, they're kind of a mess. But they, they were brought on, brought up to standard. They just aged.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Rusty, what's the lifespan on, on these we're going to put in?
I should say it says 15 years. But this, this is a unique situation where you run 100%.
Right.
24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Would you like to say we have a better handle on it, so people will be doing the maintenance?
That's the key name, maintenance on it, right?
And y'all will be doing that, right?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Any attorney comments?
I have none.
Commissioner reports your recommendations. I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible for us to make a motion to add personnel to our closed session?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. I, I would like to have a motion to add personnel to the, to the, to the closed session. That's okay.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you. Commissioner reports your recommendations.
Mr. Chair, I have one thing. If everybody that takes our State Magazine, if you look at the front cover, a Green County boy took that picture, and he has several other pictures in that magazine also. Mr. Neil German, I like to recognize him for that. He does a great job.
He does do a great job. Any other, any other commissioner reports, recommendations? Here are none. Do I have a motion to go in the closed session for the purpose of economic development, attorney client, privilege, and personnel?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried.
Who can?
We're, Mr. Secretary. We are back in regular session.
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Second. Have a motion of second to adjourn and further discussion. Here are none does in favor the motion, signify as said to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, please, nay. The ayes have the motion secured, we are adjourned.